Good, how are y'all?
This Amanda, that email that you sent me. I need to do.
Was it from the league?
Yeah.
So it's just kind of like, um, it was letting you know the state, uh, Governor Ivy signed an act that your first term that you're elected, you have to do 10 hours of training per year. And, um, so the league has like all these trainings and stuff that, um, once the runoff is finished, I'm gonna put everybody's contact information in and I'll send it to you and then you'll start getting the emails for. Yeah.
All right, D, uh, anyway.
How are you?
How are you?
How are you?
Looking, how you doing?
I'm, I'm sorry, man, I got this.
That's not.
I did call the police and, uh, and I promised the guy, I don't wanna have the hit for them yet. He said, "How did you shoot that, um, shoot that J out there?" You don't think they go, "I would've tried that first."
Hey, how y'all doing? When all that don't work. I got a doctor. How you doing?
I'm alright.
I'm alright.
Right, okay. I wouldn't try that first. I don't.
You beat my head.
You bust me good water.
I'm gonna get some good water.
Yes, right. I'm gonna get some good water.
Better than me, sir. Had to, had to. I couldn't lay it down, but I've been learning to lay it down.
Same. Mom, Jeffrey, I was going to go. Somebody in the road. Yeah. I know Dr. John. Yeah, I know him. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, y'all, finally, who does first?
Yeah.
You and my brother, bro. Hey, you're still. You're about four years apart. Man, somebody told me. I seen that man. Last time.
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
Yep.
Yeah, what was on that spreadsheet y'all were doing? Yeah, that's what's all on here. I told him I had to follow through with that.
Got two of these gone, so we gotta speak to it. Might wanna go first for all the money gets gone.
No, that's what we do in the first line.
All right, right. That'd be enough for first time.
Keeping our way to discuss this.
We got a plan. Working together called teamwork.
Donna, how about first?
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I'm gonna write it. Page seventeen.
I was gonna say, I don't got that in the fifth thing.
Fire, street maintenance, and then all of my city hall, nutrition, court, and all that.
The thing is.
There's a button on the side that you can just flip.
On the crazy.
Oh, if it's.
Well, just to get the airline.
See that song, that radio, you see that radio?
Expect this at all.
Thirty-five dollars for fifty.
Then you just.
But it's a hundred dollars. I don't want to win that seventy bucks.
I'm gonna have to do this, take a carry-on and, uh, personal. But I tried to do everything in that one. Just take my backpack. Go fly.
I think the fourth last year on the, um, there's some in January. Um, on the landscape of where we're at home.
Uh-uh.
So it's just.
Like, what's been done out of ours?
Right.
Um, the lot repairs, um, some walls, um, I don't know, I have to go bullet to see everything, but yeah.
But it was just worn out the last year. Shake it, shake it. Alright, let's start.
Well, we go over the first two pages before we start assess the projected revenues. And we are, um, projected revenue is nine point four million.
When is that?
That's our standard.
Well, it's actually.
So that's actually just projected a little bit lower than this year?
Well, I try to be conservative. So.
Historically, those are even percentage.
They're still last years. And then what is included on the miscellaneous?
There are all kinds of, um, like, I know the grants that they get for, like, the traffic overtime goes under that. Um, I don't think I ever go through the folder. Um, any kind of, um, anything that really just doesn't fit, like, these other categories. I would have to go bullet, to be honest with you. Shannon posts all the revenue, so I would have to pull the folders, see what else in there.
But maybe foundation is.
Mm-hmm.
Right there. It's increased a bit since twenty-two, that's.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I know at one time we were trying to get all the miscellaneous off of each individual department to get up.
Yes.
It looks like on your own business license that we've done well as far as your projected has usually stayed, um, in the last years, about nine twenty to nine fifty, and they usually are bringing in additional, what, five, five hundred thousand?
Um, maybe.
No, sorry, not five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So we're already up one million eighty-one thousand.
Mm-hmm.
What about the financial institutional tax?
Um, so that one went down because the, it was First Bank, it swapped to Alabama One, and credit unions don't pay the financial institution tax, so that's the difference that you see in that.
That old, um, for twenty-twenty-two fire department equipment revenue, what was that you know from twenty-twenty-two? Is it probably just some grant or some extra money that was received? And then the municipal revenue is on that other, it's on the course.
Other than me? No, it's on here, um, if you look rather under miscellaneous.
I know, but it says there, there's nothing on mine.
Oh.
Yeah, there's nothing on my screen.
Okay, yeah, I thought you were saying it's not on that. I wanna say it's around three hundred and twenty thousand.
Is it on the budget sheet?
None. All the revenues are posted here, that's just expenditures on the others.
Okay.
I'll get that fixed in the next one, too.
Tickets two twenty?
Mm-hmm.
So that would add to our total.
No, it's the two hundred, right below that. There's municipal court revenues, but then somehow it gets posted under court costs revenue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just a different, um, entry number.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think the same thing. I, I figured it was just posted.
Cause we have those two, but I wanna say the accountants, whatever they do, it goes under the court costs revenues for some reason.
What do we think has accounted for the difference in twenty-twenty-four? And then this year, it's like a fifty thousand dollar difference?
Hmm, I don't know. Maybe not right, it's in the tickets or, I know there was, um, when Rita took over, we have like a cash bonds and restitution account, and so a lot of that she was working through and getting it because there was like a hundred and something thousand dollars in it, and so she had to figure out what went where. And I wanna say it's down to like sixty-something thousand now, so that might've been like where she was initially working through that and put everything like, cause some of it was the city's money and then some of it had to go back to other people.
Yeah, the cash bond.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get some sort of, um, report on that for instance? Like, how, what was in there? Is that a little disturbing? And was that a holdover, like, for several years to you at all?
To my.
On the grant income, is this including sidewalks, what we had talked about before?
Um, no, because that has not been, um, paid out yet, so we are still working on those.
So I see we've got the opioid settlement still on those.
But yeah, we've actually. And I added it up the other day, but it's. But there are only certain things that it can be spent on, and it has to be like, um, community outreach kind of programs for, yeah, opioid radiation, like, I don't, I know you can do Narcan, like, for the police, um, vehicles to put it in there, but, um, they have like a whole list printed out of just like the specific things that it can be spent on. There you go, questions on ready? Then page seventeen is first. And then all of the salaries, I did the eighty-three percent increase, that's what the council wants to do, or if I wanna do the dollar, or whatever I did last year. Then that dollar, that's it.
What's the cost of the ten percent, does that mean?
Three percent specifically what has been done.
I think the same as yours.
The last year, what percent you put?
It was just a dollar across the board.
Yeah.
I think the biggest change for the fire department is gonna be under equipment and then equipment repairs, um, just that's all before.
About what you've got, you know, fire department is kinda not, kinda like police department, you know, it's public safety, and we need money available.
Yeah, we had two trucks down last year. We had, if I could, they're not, they're funny. Just looking over it, but the biggest change, how low it is.
Mm-hmm.
Does that account for the increase that we see over the budget?
Yes.
Uh, what is that, twenty grand-ish?
Yeah, so I added, um, eighteen thousand to the equipment, and then I added, um, sixteen thousand to the equipment repairs. It just varies, like, I know the sirens would have to do stuff to them a couple of times, um, for like the repairs and stuff.
So that's repairs, I mean, just the equipment, if there's eighteen extra thousand, what's anticipated to be used for that?
Well, I'd say last year the truck went down, and we had two of them at one time in the end.
That's it, that's repairs, if I'm talking about new equipment, that's under the repair part.
Well, and part of that, I think, that we get out of the equipment was some of the repairs, so maybe we just need to move more of that to repairs instead of just equipment.
Cause we don't need any new trucks or anything right now, right? And twenty, eighteen thousand's on everybody anyways, so.
No, I, I got a grant in for, I don't know if they're allowed a truck, but they hadn't let me know any time, um, from the AFT grant, so, and we had to pay the grant writer a portion of that.
So how much should you add to the equipment repairs?
Sixteen.
So sixteen of that and then eighteen to just under equipment, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we had an additional twenty thousand this year in repairs.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be if you put them both under the same line, that would be thirty-four. Is that right?
Well, it'd be forty-eight if I moved the additional from equipment to the repairs. It'd be forty-eight total for that line of them.
I meant just the eighteen that you said was extra. So we had twenty this year, is that sufficient to say thirty-five would cover most repairs?
Well, we had thirty-three under equipment repairs and maintenance for this year. And then part of that twenty-two that's under the equipment, I think, was also repairs that got posted in the wrong place. I'd have to go pull that to make sure, but I don't think that we spent that much on equipment this year.
Right. So if you add all of it to you, then that would be twice what the equipment repairs were this year, that would be allocated for equipment repairs.
And the sirens and things, so we, we, we're gonna keep them up and going, but, uh, we've had a.
So that come on.
Yeah, cause at this point in time, uh, the county is no longer, um, service for new, uh, people and everything that goes down, then, uh, the city has to step in as if we're playing.
You're talking about emergency sirens?
Yes.
I think we need that.
Okay.
Definitely.
That would be in repairs and equipment repairs.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, still?
Sorry.
You're sorry.
I was just curious, so we keep allocating for these fire hydrants, but we don't use it, so what's going on there? Do we not need them anymore?
We, uh, got four that has to be bought out of that, that we, we, we didn't buy them ahead of time. Before, we used to go ahead during the year, and when, when the town was there, we'd go ahead and order three or four hydrants and just have them there, so when one got hit, I got run over and everything, I probably. Two, uh, three, and, uh, Mr. Houston, I think, that we've got to get replaced.
So you just didn't worry much when we allocated that.
Right, I just, I, I just, we didn't just go ahead and order.
How many, uh, how much is each fire hydrant?
Hmm. We had to probably get, uh, exactly. It'd be probably four, five thousand dollars.
I wanna say we said around four, cause we said that twelve would buy three.
Yeah. It's like everything else is going up, too.
Oh, yeah.
And now most of the time if you buy a fire, you've got to get an isolation bay and all that except for that, but you just put it on there, without having that isolation bay, where you can turn it off if it gets hit and everything like that, so that could be different restrictions.
So the twelve thousand we allocated last year, none were bought, and now there's twelve this year, so how many total right now need to be replaced?
Only did I.
That's it? Okay.
So actually, twelve thousand might not quite be enough.
If we don't know how much they are, I mean.
Yeah. I had to, I had to get a price on it, see exactly what they cost the tire.
We can take some of that, of the equipment and repairs.
Equipment and repairs, yeah. Well, I see the five thousand for the, uh, the tires, are we still in the rotation of replacing the tires on the fire truck? Cause I know the insurance come and told us we had to do that because they were out of date, now they're made on a certain day, and they're, uh, you correct me if I'm wrong, but they told us that, you know, if something happened, we were running out of date tires, that the insurance might not cover us, is that right?
So we didn't, we did that last year? Cause it says five thousand was allocated, but then in the budget, that was you so far.
We got some tires. Yeah, we got.
We got some tires.
I know two for the ladder truck, and we changed out all the tires on one of their station one, and I wouldn't say one down there, station two, hopefully.
So it's just not under.
So that's, so it could've been posted to equipment or something like that instead of, yeah.
Instead of the tires, yeah.
But we are, not, not, only we're on the track to get everything.
Yes.
Replaced and safe and everything like it needs to do.
So is that enough, four tires? Five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And then there's any.
Yeah, I mean, not all of them are gonna be out of date, that's the reason why I had to do what was way out to begin with, and then when we catch them up. It was a tire frame on tires, I mean, I know there's not many miles on them, but there's, just cause it's.
With the insurance, it's basically the date it's put.
Yeah, it's so many years, though. Yeah, it's like five years. Yeah. They're manufactured five, six years that. And it can be brand new once we took out one, that's brand new. Brand. Reselling, you know, nobody, I can't, you can't spend any time purchasing from me because of.
And we did, I was selling those tires, even when they were delivered, they had like a year behind them on foot.
Yeah, or how long they've been sitting in a warehouse.
Did y'all send them back?
Now we use, at least they were in date.
The GPS monitoring, how are we doing that? Right here, eight hundred ninety-four dollars a week each year today on GPS monitoring. Yes, what I'm saying is your budget is eight hundred for this year, but we weren't.
It should be none, cause everything's in for this year, like, we've already paid for the last one.
So who is monitoring it, where to pay for it, I know that's gonna be.
Yes, it's like, I wanna say sixteen ninety-five per tractor, per vehicle, and then if it's an asset, which is, um, like the Tracko or, um, the, like, little buggy or whatever they have at the rec center, things like that, they're like eight ninety-five a month.
What? I guess I should know, but I don't know, the telephone fee, is that what, is that what we make you pay the police department to answer the calls from the fire department or telephone?
Um, that's gonna be telephone and internet service at the fire department.
Oh, that's the internet, too?
Yes. And then, um, Chief Cameron's phone.
So as far as the tracking, I mean, is that, what, what, um, use of purpose is this served?
I mean, I mean, you can get on there and see, like, how fast somebody was going when they're driving, you can see, like, um, you can get on there and hit replay, and it'll show you, like, everywhere that vehicle went that day, um, it'll tell you any, um, like, maintenance that needs to be done on it, um, it'll tell you if they have, like, hard braking or, I mean, it's got a lot of stuff on there.
So useful in an event of liability, as well as ensuring that you're actually working out to show this. Fortunately, which has been nice.
What is appropriations?
Mm-hmm.
I'm, what is?
That's the Christmas bonus for the fire department.
I mean, uh, probably should know, but didn't know.
Incense.
Incense, yeah, incense, that's what I don't.
We won't see your incentive that happens to be paid by our personnel.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it. I don't have to ask you any questions.
Y'all have anything else on fire?
I'm good.
Don't want to move to the next page, that's maintenance. And I do have in there added a, um, extra person for maintenance, um, that's something the council would like to do, that is added in to the salaries.
Getting off topic here, but down here, State Highway twenty-two, right there, bridging the gap, there's a pedestrian sign if you're, if you're going that way, but if you're coming this way, there's no pedestrian crosswalk sign. I mean, I know that's the state, but we check with them and see about putting one there. Because I was down there Saturday, and I walked across there, and a log truck was coming, he never slowed down, and and then, so that's what made me look, and what there's not a sign.
Even the, well, people don't understand that's your traffic, I'm not showing. Not everybody gets.
I mean, but when you got kids and stuff and stuff going on, it's just.
Well, there were probably spades hit by.
Well. Pass it. I guess we could have done that way than we did back in the day.
They could have put a yellow one, just thank you, right?
I watched two years this morning, kind of from crap out here, around, all same stuff, okay?
Anything on maintenance?
Is twelve hundred dollars enough for tires care?
Yes, ma'am. You said twelve hundred? I haven't looked at it long enough, I got seven thousand. You're on five thirty-seven.
On the street, probably, going in there.
Oh, no, I'm on it, well, it's the same.
We'll do it next.
I apologize.
Keith, what do you foresee, tell us about the additional, potential additional?
I'm trying to make it more accessible for everybody, we have a pickle every day, when something's done, we can't get it and put them on. And I would like to start, invite them to shop, where they could try to be at the shop, to have people pulling up needing stuff. If you gotta come up here and work on something, and die it up for twelve hours, and they're waiting on you to get back. I'll be in everywhere I can, and we got like twenty-six or seven buildings, a little over a hundred pieces of equipment, two people can't get around.
I'm sorry, I mean, where did you say you added in the extra money for that?
So it'll be under salaries, and then the employer taxes, which is FICA, and then under the retirement.
But on the salaries, it was budgeted ninety grand this year? Okay, so what, like, where in the pace bill you see this person falling, like, just paying a basic labor? Because it's twenty grand, that's something like.
It would start out, I think that labor job starts at twelve, but we didn't use the full ninety, so that's why, like, I would try to build a cushion in, like, in case of overtime, or, you know, like, we don't ever know what we're gonna need, but, you know, we're nowhere near that full ninety, so that's why I did the one.
It'd be a basic, bottom of the line. It's not what you need for jail labor, but that's just all what it's all about.
I got you. Any more questions on maintenance?
Yeah, I got one question. I guess it comes under equipment, I was just saying, I was gonna ask, if you got all the tools that you need, I know today, in today's world, you cannot work on a vehicle without a computer, without, I mean, I know you, you don't have the diagnostic software and stuff like that, that's why we have to depend on taking a lot of those newer vehicles to, to the dealership. That's the way they're made now. You can't order the software, and then there's like freon or anything else. They change, every year they change to something else, and you've got to buy a whole nother unit behind the back. It's not that effective for us, what we do, it's cheaper for us to have to do it, but has to buy the dealership to have it.
And sometimes you can get, on some of the trucks, you can get, uh, Amanda Williams or such, some of these trucking companies sometimes can help you out with, with their software. Or you have in the past.
We have a little bit in the past, um, the main thing we have right now, the head of the saw, and the head of the truck, they put a freight loader dealership down in the bay, and they have the most powerful of the software, but everything we've ever had to do except for the dealers.
Sounds a bit mad, but we have to do it.
Probably have to lose those, you know, minor stuff, we have to try and put.
Anything else under maintenance? The street department? Do you anticipate a lot of equipment repairs as well? Do you anticipate a lot of, um, equipment repairs this year as well?
We can't, yeah, it's only that, sometimes if a loader goes down, there's fifty thousand, you know, so.
Well, you've had a lot of problems with bush off lately, too, ain't it?
I, um, and the tractor's been gone for almost a month now.
Really?
Yeah, I believe you haven't gotten a bush off. Getting parts for something that's ten years plus older is getting very difficult. I want some, two weeks on one, high pressure switch for the air conditioning, that's why I can't.
Um, on the second page, he has a tractor under capital outlays, down towards the bottom, a hundred and ten thousand.
On the ceiling, though, where you, everyone, the National Order of Arms, what kind of ceiling are you proposing?
We were gonna try a, well, that's a mirror roof coated, that's a cell that don't be close, um, quite, but flexes a small bit. Things do good on areas that we've already used them.
Would that be covering the whole thing, or like more of a patch?
I suppose it will cover the whole thing, I mean, I'm not considering that for time, but the labor would be.
So they put a torch down there for my building, it's awesome, and it was very cost efficient. I think that's it, probably, and version, Pat and I would put it on that ability soon, and it's not that expensive in comparison to some, it's gonna be more expensive than that, but.
We had memories put on several of our buildings that you could put it on.
You're talking about pitch roof cover, is it?
It's like already the flat.
It's cor, it's corrugated, is it metal, something, something?
Some type, I don't really know what was it, used like a coating, just the metal was like a coating. I'm sure it was good back in the forties, but it's been a while.
You know what I would like us to have, a street sweeper? Or some, some way to clean these curvings and shoulders and stuff with all these weeds and sand and debris? And I don't know if we have enough, um, manpower or whatever for to get out there and just get it up, because a lot of the streets look so bad, so bad.
It'd have to be a different machine than we had last time, I think that one last time wasn't really.
Oh, yeah, I hear you, straight.
Yeah, that's, that'd be the same way ever took a whoopin' on with that.
Maybe that was just a living.
And you ever was driving, really liked to clean mustardy a lot, you want me?
They're trying to keep you active, they.
No, they weren't trying to keep you active, they were, they were enjoying the street, and just hanging out is what they were doing, exactly.
And then you have the fact that there's a trip to run, I mean, you, you, you have to be trained by somebody that's actually knows how, and and they have to continue to do it that way, and once them people leave, other people think they know how to do it better, and they tear it up to everything.
Kind of like motorbikes, and everybody just can't run a motorbike.
Because that thing goes all over the place, anything tears up, I mean, it tears up doors, if it's not doing it right, right, yes.
Takes skills.
But do you have an idea for us to get better street services with all these knees and pine straw, all that stuff?
We've been doing like we have done in the past, and we try to do it after the leaves fall, not after all the time. As far as the curtain, might as well try the curtain. Actually, I've started already, um, with a couple of guys on the drop dud, where you can't get it back with the steel, not all of them are straight with the curtain, you know, they don't have a drop duder. They may have to do anything to take it out, but we're trying to get a head start on, on the head cleaning and some of those.
And the meat truck, what's the meat truck for?
Uh, I gotta pick it up, it's a whole thing. Need replacement.
The one that you dropped?
No. Actually, it goes, does go better. I have, do have two, two thousand fourteen, this one's unusual. Need replacement.
I'm just trying to be conservative, it hasn't been giving me any trouble.
Keep going. We've been keeping going, working our way, trying to keep it going. An oil leak on the back of the engine like that, it's cost you quite a bit to repair, and the last time we got repaired, two weeks later, it's the same thing, and then nobody can guarantee it fixing it. So a hundred and thirty-two thousand miles on it, it's still up, so.
Anything else on the street department? Thank you, Mr. Pete, I'm sorry, was that the stuff you did before where it's just the extra on the out, yeah?
Yes.
It's in the storage building you had on there, it's for, like, we have one, and try to get two on the board, because we have our bores and our wiggers and saws and all, it's just none of them, and this one. Keep it out of there.
Amanda, are you, you're doing City Hall?
So the sort on page thirty, that's the mayor. And then, um, there is council, I added extra in the travel, um, since the state enacted the thing where the new mayor and council has to do ten hours of training per year, so I have additional funds in the travel expense for mayor and council.
Anything under the mayor's office? City Hall?
I mean, I don't really think anything changed on this, the garbage billing fees, the difference in that is one point one, taking over the residential, um, but all of that is the pass through from the utility board.
Did you, I have the landscape that I'm in. I don't know how to ask her that, she said it wasn't in the last, that the last one was just the painting and stuff, or from last year, right? So is that in this one, Amanda?
No, I mean, I don't know how much that would cost, so I don't remember.
It's not understanding that we're sending with the spice, or the estimates for having.
I have not seen anything on landscape.
It's final, damn.
Yeah, I mean, if I have a sticker to put in there, I will.
You don't even own the contacted on? Amanda, do you have a guess?
I'm not gonna guess, I can get you what was sent, I know it's been sent at least once, because y'all got me to come look at, um, the rec center, the new police station in here, can't remember if there was another place, it's not another place that needs, another building?
The nutrition center on there?
I planned some of that to do myself, but if it made some work, we'll be able to look, but, I mean, he did that, because the last time I talked to him, he said he needed to, um... No, because he said not to do that until, uh, some of that other stuff dug up, because of the, whatever we're gonna do over there, or y'all are gonna do over there, but, um, uh, he said he needs to, you know, if you're gonna do it, you need to do it now, and he said order on and pick it out and get it in a ground in like October, or something, he were gonna give it water.
Amanda, he's saying for salaries for the mayor, he's got for proposed twenty twenty-six, twenty-four thousand, five hundred, what is it, five hundred thousand?
That was just.
Well, it's two thousand a month, right?
Mm-hmm. And I, I mean, from the, I don't know what they're counting on there, because the accountants are showing actual twenty-four thousand two fifty-three and twenty-four thousand three fifteen for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, so that's what the...
Should be twenty-four thousand, all right?
Mm-hmm. And when I put it in on payroll every time, it's two thousand, so I don't know where the, those numbers are coming from, from them.
All right, anything else on City Hall? All right, the council's next.
Um, can I go back for a quick, I'm not old, now, this is from twenty twenty-two, so I cannot, I don't know, I'm sure it's the, it looks like the APD for that little bit out front, and then that other area, uh, I don't know if he decided to put a light pole there or what y'all are doing, but it was thirteen thirty-two, so I would just say that's a little bit more now. And then, City Hall was thirty, right at thirty-seven fifty, again, this is from September twenty twenty-two. That was when we were gonna do it before, and it was decided to paint it. Um, and then the rec center is... That was nine thousand, because that was, uh, that included some sod, I guess that was probably the thought process right there, uh, where they already cleaned it, because they put in the new sidewalk, I guess the thought process was there, maybe to be cleaned, because you're talking about putting new signage there at one point in. So it looks like the sod is a great deal of that, and then we're gonna plant some trees going down the side of the rec center. But I'll get him to, um, let us know how much money that is, if any.
All right, anything else, anything on the council? All right, anything else, anything on the council? All right, the nutrition center.
And, um, two part-time employees that we have there, since the Easter seals did not have their funding, um, that's up to the council if you wanna continue that past the end of the year. And I have that in there for salaries.
What page is that reading?
Seven.
So how many total employees, just the same number?
Full workforce, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Anything on the nutrition center?
Is that covering the names now? It's working.
Yes.
All right, we have the cemetery. Anything on the cemetery?
The food yard.
Who else you have?
Court.
Yes.
So repairs and maintenance on the cemetery, like if we had some more trees that needed to be trimmed or cut back, is that where that would come from?
Yes, sir.
Cause I think we finally got those cut. They really looked good. I think it would have helped.
Court is also fourteen.
Anything, anything on court?
I'm just curious. What did it come down from sixty-three thousand in twenty twenty-two? Would you remember what happened that changed that? That's a lot different now. What's the salary? Sorry. I'm just curious. Cause we've always had the same number of employees every day.
Um, unless community service was under that. But that was long before I got there.
Is that it?
No.
What else?
What other kind, what other kind of equipment do we need for court?
Um, she has, yeah, she has the two different computers and then, um, the twelve oh three, I think, which is the repairs and maintenance. That also includes her, um, software, like the monthly that we pay for it and like the e-commerce stuff and everything.
How, the, the feed and care program, is that the, the amount we have to repay in the county?
Mm-hmm.
How many?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on court?
Seventy-five thousand a year. Uh, we're at sixty-three right now. But I don't know that that's been paid yet for this one. So that might go up.
There's so much of that.
Mm-hmm. Thirty-five percent.
Anything else on court?
How many inmates do they own in this house for us? Like, I don't have any idea. Might have to buy out, but.
All right, next.
Page nineteen, the appropriations.
All right, anything on appropriations?
We transferred to debt service. That's just, I mean, that's just an automatic amount, well, not automatic, but it's based on where we owe.
Yes.
Our, how are we paying that?
We pay, we pay so much per month, but it goes into an account and then they draw two payments a year off of that account.
And I'm sure it has to be a interest and other things that change.
Like I have a list in there that shows like every year in May, the amount changes a little bit. It's never anything drastic.
I would like to revisit this Grand North County economic development page.
I'd just like to get some information about what's going on.
Ten thousand dollars.
We don't never, we don't ever hear anything from the director.
And then if you look at the bottom of the page, the total revenues versus expenditures, what everything we have in the budget that they asked for, we're showing, um, an excess of nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars versus predicted revenues.
And I think that's the first, if there are ten million, that's how many things, that's pretty awesome. I've never seen it pass it up three before.
All right, anybody have anything else on the appropriations?
I just think we need to get something for ten thousand dollars. I'm contacting them if I can get them to.
We, can we get a list? Economic Development Authority?
Uh.
Well, I wouldn't reach out and, you know, just, it's not that easy, man, plus, you know. We never hear.
We will resume. It was just, it was too much work yesterday with him.
It's already free to talk. Wear some clothes.
I got clothes.
That's a T-shirt.
Well, you know, sitting, sitting in one at home.
Mine they hold? Daytime or nighttime?
Daytime.
Seventy-two.
Okay. This one's all seventy-three now.
Yeah, night time, fifty-eight. And mine will do. I mean, I'm uncomfortable yet. If it's cold enough, I'll sleep.
Did y'all go drink coffee last night? I'm sorry, I couldn't make it. It is on digital. I didn't hear of anything about it in the whole county. That's why I'm gonna talk to some of those government members.
Where to go back more trees?
She said she had this stuff.
Have I heard of it?
It'll be a long evening, I'm sure.
No idea. Sure. You're just. I don't know. Must have loaded, must have loaded after it's, uh, used to be with Bruce, which may have been on my papers. Here, I'm putting it on my, especially after the mayor, he went and done it to. Ain't been, yeah, that was no last over thirty minutes. It was, I mean, I ain't got no more business than that, so didn't. They tried to act like they twenty minutes every time.
You want us to go out and park a lot of foots and just get the business over with?
Yeah, didn't the street department do a great job? They come up through that cow, cut all those lands off. Well, they had a contract, had to have a bucket truck. But I'm gonna tell you, uh, them guys on that bucket truck, they worked, they worked harder than the guys that were cutting.
What are you talking about? Those guys on the stretch, climbing trees like, without any?
Oh, really? I didn't see that.
Oh, yeah, it did run from my house. And I said, what is?
I saw the.
He said, I will work as much as you can for the truck.
When they come up the street, there was one in a bucket truck and one that had his long, longest poles all over the scene. But he was, he was cutting them too. The nigga doesn't contact me much anymore. We don't, we don't converse a whole lot. I don't, I don't.
I think it looks great. It's, you know, otherwise it's gonna be on the road and store.
Yeah. I mean, I. Over on the No, it's just like, if you turn on the tension on the days, it's like four times on the left.
Was where Craig stands?
Yeah, straight by the way, right there.
Okay.
Anyway, there was a box truck like a, like a.
Is it not there?
Somebody brought that to my attention. So they go down that street too? Cause it needed it bad.
Yeah.
I did a. There's a lot of roads down there.
You make sure, we put money in the budget.
Keith, do you know when they're supposed to start paving? And striping? Cause I know they're, like, they'll do all the paving first and then when they strike, they don't strike everything at the same time. So.
We're supposed to be getting the paving crew in here pretty soon. I seen them, I seen them up in, uh, Wheat Island. They have a place they had to fix in front of the co-op before you get to it. They were back up there digging it up and making a patch right there last week when I went there. I'm hoping they have no way down here.
That's what I thought. Once I got through with that, I thought they were.
And the, the striping crew was actually up there last week.
Okay.
Um, but now I'll strike sometimes. So I said they get nothing here pretty quick.
I thought we had, I thought you were breaking the center. They just stopped up the tree there. Why you need to have them out to the road?
Engineers like that. That's all, I had my hands up.
Well, we're quickly becoming a walking community, so we need to be putting sidewalks. We intend to have people walk. That keep them out of the road. Don't get in trouble. Yeah, we do. Don't need to hit. That kid, somebody take, I take it is, right below, stop through the curvy and all that, there's the road and all the curvy. My damn sideways, friend, I'll go down this side again. Who'd be crazy to do that? But I don't know, I'm seeing here, I don't feel it. This ain't got a vanic speed group. And hold it.
That's the ones that are going through the, what are they, so? Like the ones where we're having to do the, what's it called, full debt reclamation and like over there on the porch drive. We're all just, all gravel right there. Like they're gonna come in and do all that.
To get backwards, I had operated months ago.
A copy of the.
Yes, sir. I have it. Better wait until I see him.
We're, we're now.
You know, you're taking one minute for that.
I'm here.
Something wrong, he's not here. So that's what I'm saying.
On the second.
All right, you ready? All right, we're gonna call the meeting. I'm gonna ask council member, former and latest in the play, the council member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, once again, would contact me by this day, and I pray, um, Father, that you be a father just me. We pray, um, Father, for a special prayer for our mayor and council member in all of this here tonight. We pray, um, Father, that we try to move this city forward, that you bless it in a mighty way. We pray, um, Father, for help, strength, and we pray for our city, that you keep, put your love and honor protection around our city. In the name of Jesus, we ask, amen.
All right, is there a motion, uh, any amendments or a motion to move forward with the minutes from August the eighteenth?
I will make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Is there a second? Second. Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dussey?
Yes.
Is there a motion or any, are there any amendments to be made or is there a motion to carry the minutes from the September second special call meeting?
Make a motion. Who have the minutes from the September second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harley?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
That's right.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Foreman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dussey?
Under old business, we have the increase in price on cedar wood plots.
Under old business, we have the increase in price on state of wood plots. So I spoke to Mr. Beal. He says that there's around a hundred plots left behind the leader office. Um, Mr. Keith said he didn't know if we would be able to access all one hundred of them. Um, he said there's some plots left in the other areas, but they're just kind of random, and he would need to show somebody where they're at. Um, we've probably sold twenty plots over the last five years. And he said that his map is updated as far as he can do it. Um, and that is the map that he has turned into City Hall, and we just need to update the master map that we have.
What was the payment? It was five hundred dollars a plot that we were trying to increase it to?
That was his suggestion.
Is there a motion to increase the plots to five hundred dollars?
Send me.
Is there a second?
Second. I want, I just want to have a comment. You know, we do need to, to understand what we have, you know, where they are. And I think as a council, we need to decide how many, you know, we need to put, you know, we need to say, okay, we've got a hundred, we can't access the fifty, so we'll, maybe we can just agree just to sell the fifty and, uh, and designate, you know, where those are, and just kind of have it in order, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Anything else? Roll call vote. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Um, under new business, we have the airport plan, twenty thousand, twenty-six. So, um, you have a, several pages stapled together in your packet, um, if you want to kind of look over it. The plan that we had with Garber that we kind of laid out, um, the next thing coming up was going to be a parallel taxi lane, and this is, um, taking advantage of, um, AIP funds and then AIG funds. So, um, the airport improvement funds are federal funds, and then we have, um, the airport improvement grants that come through Aldott. So our percentage, um, would be two and a half percent. When they had the meeting with Aldott and talked about the parallel taxi lane, the way the grade is right there, it would be a ton of work and a lot of hauling in, um, of earth to be able to make it level to do the parallel taxi lane. So that's not anything that's really on Aldott's radar right now. Um, one of the pilots was approached by, um, a landowner, the land is across Chestnut from the airport. Um, and me personally, I don't see the point of purchasing it, but Aldott thinks that that's part of like our protection of the airport. So they were very interested in that project. Um, and then the other thing is a helicopter pad and then a parking area. Um, since the helicopter pad is no longer on property that's owned by the city, um, the airport makes a feasible place to put that. And they were on board with doing a helicopter pad and a parking area there.
So we need to decide what projects we want to afford with?
Mm-hmm. And, um, we will do, this is just like a pre-application, like it's not committing us to anything. Um, we can discuss this at the next meeting, but this is just for y'all to look over and for any discussion or anything that y'all have with it.
Anything, any, any statements, questions on that? Um, the next thing under new business is resol- resolution thirteen eighty-five, appointing runoff election officials?
Whereas a municipal runoff election has been called to be held on the twenty-third day of September, twenty twenty-five, and where section eleven forty-six, twenty-seven of Alabama Code of Alabama in nineteen seventy-five and regulations adopted pursuant thereto, provide in part that the municipal governing body, not less than fifteen days before the holding of any municipal election, appoint from the municipality officers to hold the election as follows. Where electronic ballot counters are used, at least one inspector and three clerks. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of runoff Alabama, that the election officers for said election shall be as follows. Chief Inspector, Danita Nolan. Inspectors Mary Anins, Ginger Corbett, Vicky Dixon, Dorothy Tidwell, Agnes Watkins. Registration clerks, ballot clerks, machine clerks, Stephen Bree, Barbara Burrows, Becky Hill, Margaret Lambert, Paula Lambert, Keith Nolan, Barbara O'Hara, and Mike Potts. Absentee ballot clerks will be Inspector Danita Nolan, Mary Anins, and Dorothy Tidwell. Compensation for the polling officials is hereby set at a hundred twenty-five dollars per day for chief inspector and inspectors. Compensation is hereby set at a hundred dollars per day for registration clerks, ballot clerks, and machine clerks. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of runoff Alabama, that the city clerk, chief inspectors, and/or assistant chief inspectors and clerks are hereby authorized to engage additional and replacement poll workers in the event persons appointed here and above fail to report for duty for any reason.
Is there a motion to carry resolution thirteen eighty-five?
Someone.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Um, the next thing under new business is Herman Engineering, the proposal for Bonner Drive, Luffette Highway, and Bell Street. And Mr. Keith will need to talk to y'all about that.
We've already. Fugitive appropriated the funds for the, uh, replacement of the pipe under the Glady Mill Road. Bonner Drive has one right there just before you get to eighty-seven. If you turn off of twenty-two, it's gonna be the first paved road to the left. Um, the whole pipe is rusted out a hundred. It's collapsed in.
Up under the road right there.
Right.
Close to, close to eighty-seven?
Yep. The, when the water comes down eighty-seven, I, the lady showed me the video where it flooded her ha- her yard and almost got her house. Shannon Smith lives there, man. And it's because it continued on through the pipe. One of those. While he had the equipment up here down there, Glady Mill Road, we're gonna try to get that up there also. And, uh. I could pay that moving fee twice. Get to a period of, and there was also a, uh, concern of the pipe that goes under the road right there on the whole effect, that the trailer park. There's a pretty good hole right there. And we were gonna try to put a drop inlet right there and backfill it to where it's not such a hole, and you can actually be a little safer. And he said that he would try to, I got plenty of money in my budget, hopefully to, uh, cover that part of the storm rain issues. So he said while he has the equipment up here, he would try to get to it and see how far he could get. With what he could do. I got a lot of other jobs going on, other places, but it's supposed to be here tomorrow to get started on Glady Mill.
Do you have any, um, cost estimate?
Just what the, uh, no, nothing on the project. I mean, it's just their time and labor, like for whatever machines they brings and the people that come to work.
Is there a motion to move forward with, uh, um, engineering, um, or the rusted out pipes on Bonner Drive, Luffette Highway, and Bell Street?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
You want to know what's going on?
Not a dollar figure, no. Now.
It's not filled out.
I think the, the one we passed on Glady Mill Road, I wanted to say was eighteen-five. But we done pretty good by that. Uh. And that's taking it out, digging it up, going back, replacing it. They were gonna put asphalt down, and he said today, when he talked to me, he may have to put gravel and wait on the asphalt till he can get some. He said, I'm not able to get any asphalt right now to put it on all these roads over here. Now he would come back and, it's included in the price, he would come back and scratch the, crush and run out and put asphalt down, since he could get some.
Roll call vote.
Now, I would, I would draw my motion, is I want to wait and get a price, you know, I mean, I, I, I might get it done, but I know we don't have a price.
Yeah, but I can do it still, cause.
Well, that's, the reason he gave these rates is because he was saying he's already gonna have, like, the mobilization fee and all of that is in the price that he gave on Glady Mill.
Several, several thousand dollars.
It is, and when the form to do it is this week.
Yeah, and while he's already here doing those, he, we won't have to do the mobilization fee again. It'll just be whatever time and machinery it takes on all those three spots.
Who, um, who was the motion in the second?
Yep.
Excuse me, what's that? Who was the motion in the second?
The motion was Jacobs and second.
Farmer.
Okay.
We actually contacted, uh, Todd Weir and Strength Construction and tried to get them to come look at it and give us prices, and they said they were too busy, they wouldn't even come and give us.
If we don't get it done now, it might be, you know, tell them I wouldn't get somebody up here.
The only, only reason that he's able to come and do it himself is because they had a cancellation down at Auburn University. And something they were working on down there. And they said that's gonna try to free us up for this week, if we want to try to get it done.
You don't carry a motion?
And what's going to be done to Bell Street?
Yeah. There's the ditch that runs in front of Clark's Funeral Home.
Mm-hmm.
It's wet weather springs under the ground, so they wet all the time. They're gonna try to make what they put in a French drain. They, they dig it out, pour big gravel down in the bottom of it, and come over it with dirt and try to slope it to where it's able to be cut. And then there was something along the, in the storm drain ditches going up the hill that comes down from Willie Clark.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they were gonna try to fix all of that to where it would be usable. I mean, it's, it's just washed out already.
Um, Jacob said he's gonna leave his motion in place, and then there was a second. So roll call vote. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
All right, um, the last thing under new business is the Kids Town Building Board.
So, um, we have the quote, it's from Norton's Florin, um, for Southern Carpet Brokers. Um, this is just something we were looking at with the Kids Town Clubhouse. We have, um, ordered like the sink and like the, um, smaller like renovations that was put in the budget for last year. We're gonna pull the cabinets out that are in there, um, but we were just looking at the floor and, um, thinking about updating it, if this is something that the council would be for. Um, we talked to him yesterday, and we're gonna get somebody to look at the door, because he was talking about where the threshold is on it, there's something like weird with it, so we may have to have something done to the door and the threshold before they, um, start on the floor.
Is there a motion to move forward with the twelve thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-five cents with Norton's Florin for the Kids Town Building Board?
So this will come out of capital improvement?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second. That building is used a lot.
Isn't it during the winter weekend?
You know, it's, it's one of the few places we have for the public to use it.
Um, and Shannon also wanted me to ask about if the council wanted to go up on the deposit or the rental fee. It's a seventy-five dollar deposit now and a seventy-five dollar rental. And if something was damaged over there, I mean, we've never kept a deposit, I don't think, since I've been here. But if something was damaged, the seventy-five dollars is not gonna cover really anything. But, um, that's just something that she wanted me to ask.
Because in for a whole day, is that any five dollars? Yeah, I would. And if we're giving the deposit back anyway, that's great, but, I mean, those places, I can't imagine less than a hundred dollars. And for a whole day, I mean, do you have a sug- did she have a suggestion on that?
Uh, a hundred was her suggestion.
Let's do the roll call vote for the board. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Same.
Is there a motion to move forward with a hundred dollar deposit and a hundred dollar rental fee for Kids Town?
Send me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Um, under the mayor's report, I'm gonna, um, appoint Tim R. Terry to the housing authority board. All of the councilmembers, report, councilmember Holly.
Uh, what is the status of the street light at eleven oh four LaFell Highway?
Um, the email has been sent, so we're just waiting on it to go in the power. There were, I think, two sent in on that same email.
And, um, Keith, did you ever hear about the Luna Bridge anymore on CSS?
He said, when the last time I talked to him, he said they had ordered the boards for it, and the one that dipped it, really. If it didn't happen to get it beat, some that got in that fire. One of their plants had a big fire where they make all of that, and he said if they did, it would have been late.
Okay.
Councilmember Jacobs?
I just want to thank, uh, street department, and I know they, we had a contractor cutting some limbs, uh, up high with a bucket truck and all, but, but, uh, his guys really did a great job coming behind them and, and getting all the limbs up, and I'm sure that saved a lot of money, uh, for the contractor not having to get them up. And one other, one other thing is that I've seen a couple of advertisements local by companies that, that. I'm seeing their streets, and they do striping also, but I, I'd like to see us put some money in the budget. And Tammy's talked about it before, about trying to seal coat some of these roads that have the cracks, because that's makes them deteriorate. Once that water gets in there in the wintertime and it freezes, it just, it just makes those up. So I, I'd like to see, Keith, or somebody explore, you know, some options as to far as, uh, seal coat, cost, and, and I'd like to see us put some money in the budget to try, at least try and see if it'll help. It'll help, help some of the streets that we can't afford to pave right now.
Right. And save them with just, uh, the cracks before they get these big potholes.
Right, before, I mean, they don't get you better, they just get worse. But if you can get that sealing and those cracks, keep the water out, and that's, and that's all I've got.
All right, councilmember Farmer?
That, that, that.
Councilmember Johnson?
I just have one thing. I, I got an email from Alan Tucker, say, for Herman Engineering. Y'all may recall that Kyle Conley is who we hired to do the, um, electrical plans, um, to draw those up for the museum, and then Alan Harmon was, um, Alan Tucker was hired to do what's called the mechanical engineering. Well, there's one thing that was forgotten, or not completely done, I guess, because he didn't know the extent he would need to, when Doug Creators did, the architect did the, uh, original design. And it was, it's the line work in the CAD for the floor plan, um, something about the base, um, that will then give us a full construction plan. So ultimately, you know, they need these, I guess the museum got that, uh, grant for all those, uh, display cabinets, and there's some things that need to happen as a cluster flooring, and that will give them the additional information they need. So I asked Alan, how much is that? Cause he can do it. He said he can't imagine it being more than fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand. So I would propose that we agree to two thousand, and he said he would keep it as low as possible.
Is that a motion?
I am, I'm putting on, on a motion, and it's for Alan Tucker with Herman Engineering.
Is there a second?
I'll second, and I, I got a question. You said the people would say, what, like a can?
Yeah, you know, Doug Creators did that first one for Furry Forest, remember, he gave that.
Draw, it's just a drawing as far as.
Basically completion of the architectural plans for the engineering and the, uh, which the engineering did, which are mechanical intercoming, and then the other guy's doing the rest of it. So it basically completes the plan. So the money we've already spent on both guys.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not the complete plan, it's not gonna be what we need, right? We're not getting our money's worth, uh, I don't know.
And it's something to do with the, the floor plan for, so that they can complete the construction plan to make it what it needs to be for a museum, so.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Or anything else? I'll just write them, I'll see you work.
Um, the only thing that I have is a reminder for y'all to put on your calendar, September thirtieth at noon will be the canvas for the runoff election results.
Is that a Tuesday?
Yes.
All right, on street maintenance. Fire, um, firewater. Is there a motion to go into executive session, relation rules, say? Send me. Is there a second? Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
No, not anymore. Either they just, um, how long is Mexico City? That was the last place that they, uh, were still doing it, so. I like it. Sean really loves to see that, unfortunately.
Yep, that's right.
Sean, I thought you said you wanted to, your class, and you.
They got a council, they got a council.
Got a town?
They all died in the trouble.
They don't, uh, they don't.
The Potsers is out of town, a bunch of them is out of town, so we didn't have a meeting. We're gonna have it next, next year. The Pots is out of town, a bunch of them is out of town, so we didn't have a meeting. We're going to have a next, next call. They were, I've been trying to talk to them and get the army out there, but they wouldn't have the Bethany House. We ain't got the money. And I said, well, I paid three hundred dollars. Yeah. Eight hundred, hundred and twenty-five.
Where, where did you say you were going to go have your reunion now?
They're going to have it with the roar from down.
Oh, Becky, I thought you said the Bethany House. I was going to say. Or no, right there, man.
I wouldn't have known that, but that's what I heard too.
I was sitting there, what?
I was, when he said that, I was like, really?
I don't know the Bethany House.
It's.
I know. Yeah.
I couldn't believe you said that.
I didn't hear that. I heard Becky, and I just thought, must be Royce. Is a guy from Dothen coming up?
Huh?
Is a guy from Dothen coming up, one that's in your class, lives down, lives down south Alabama somewhere, makes bowls, peanuts, and everything else.
Oh, wow. Bobby Marshall?
Yeah.
He hopes, so we hope he's coming.
Cause at the ball game, he and I always sit up our tents next to each other, and I fix, I fix stuff, and he fixes stuff, and we swap.
I hope he's coming. Seventeen, we have a home.
We have, we have jambalaya, parts of peanuts.
Oh, that's jambalaya good.
Yeah, um, collard greens.
Ooh.
Um, brownies.
Bush.
It's what we, what we make.
Yeah, it was. But see, they were, when I built your new, uh, film house out there.
I don't know what we're going to do it now.
I don't know what we're going to do out there. They said it's.